Yeah, Jerry, there's a, there's a link right on the website for you can, anybody can log into the Zoom. For the planning board, I think is the only one.
Yeah, if you check like, we'll put the meeting agenda up on the boards, there'll be a Zoom. It's just, looks just like your agenda here, we'll put it up on the board out there. We'll have to zoom like.
Alright, we are live on.
Alright, live here. I'm just trying to.
Can I all share it? Facebook?
Under reoccurring meetings, put planning board meeting. Application is not responding. The program didn't respond, if you wait, do you want to end this process?
Hey, Jeff.
Hey, guys.
We got all shared on YouTube, sorry, Facebook. And.
Looks like Zoom is not going to work at the moment. So, 7:01 will fire up. If I can get Zoom to work, I will fire it up. Alright, so call the order, kind of people here. I think they're all missing is, um, actually I missed anyone, are they?
Carol.
Carol, Carol. I don't have anyone. She's in Florida.
Go, go.
Um, yes, that's right, till the end of the month.
Say it's numbered there, so he's made the right call.
Definitely. Alright, public notice, title Troy. Notice is hereby given in accordance with RSA 675 colon 7. At the planning board will hold a public hearing of proposed amendments to subdivision site plan review regulations on Wednesday, April 16th, 2025, as regular, meeting begin at 7:00 PM at Troy Town Hall. The purpose of these amendments is to update the application procedures to be consistent with recent changes to state law. A complete copy of the proposed changes available for review at the town hall during regular business hours. Anyone need assistance to attend the meeting should contact the selectmen's office one week prior scheduled date. Order, Kyle Smith, Chair, Troy Planning Board. Oh, excuse me, we agreed not to contact one week prior the day of. I don't think there's much we have to go over. It's really just verbiage from the state you added to. Public hearing portion, is there a public comment, anyone, that's not the board? Hopefully I'll check it on soon.
Yeah, Carol may be coming in.
Yeah, it's just frozen right now.
Oh, Carol just, no Zoom, so I can't communicate. Carol just messaged, emailed me.
We'll just let it over to try it.
Five, three, two, one.
Give it five, just in case I get this to work, if anyone comments online. We figured these would be quick. Do anyone here have questions on this? This is pretty straightforward on this. Control all delete doesn't even work.
I think if that's all we use that for, we could probably get a little cheap laptop.
Yeah, this is very old. Um, alright.
Should we have Carol call any one of us?
Um. Either, I don't know if we need her yet. Think we're having questions.
I just told her she would call my cell phone until we get it up.
Yep.
So we'll see if she calls, I gave her the number.
Um, ooh, what happened? Now it's all black. Alright, well, don't think they publicly clicking the door down for this, so we closed the public hearing portion. Public here. And this is discussion of the board, did we have anything? Think we're all pretty straightforward on this.
I, I think it'd be good, I don't think they're any rushed, it might be good to wait until Carol's here and just ask her to clarify a bit. Unless you can come in on the other phone, I'd like to hear what she has to say.
Technology make your life faster and easier.
I had kindergarten here, leaving them out.
Where?
Used to have school here.
Kindergarten. Then we went to the school.
So kindergarten here than first grade down there or?
Yeah. This room in the weather, Tom Clark is. I don't remember ever going upstairs though, as a child. There's tennis court up here or something like that, or in a stage.
There's a stage in a big like ballroom, you can go up there and take a look if you want.
Yeah, I've been up there, you know, a couple of years, few years ago though, as a kid, I don't think we ever went up there before.
Just the bad kids, they're still up there.
The rec, um, has been using the upstairs for a haunted house, the last couple of years for Halloween. I want to say what, five years we've been using it?
I was, has to have, just try to start. Oh, something's happening. I like her now, open Zoom, the current laptop may give you a hard time.
I have a question on property and Tom Clark told me to come here to the meeting.
Yep.
Yep, I must be hearing you there?
Paul Williams.
Yep.
Yeah, you're next on the agenda, right now it was a public hearing. Unfortunately Zoom's not working, so maybe this consultant can't contact us.
I don't know if I actually have her number.
Do you have specific questions for Carol?
No, I, I don't, but it'd just be, really it'd be good just to hear about where these came from, if it means anything. My thinking is it probably doesn't hurt to delay it until she's here.
If we're just in our deliberation part of that, if you can.
Hold on one second, I'll put you on speakerphone. Speaker. Alright, you are on speakerphone.
Recurring meetings.
Hey Carol, it's Jack.
Hi, Jack.
Hi, I just had a question, if you could just give us a little background on these. I haven't looked at them in detail, but you know, I assume there's new statute and you're updating and you just tell us a little bit about the statute and what changed?
Jack, hang on, this, this is very weird, I heard you see my telephone and now on the, on the YouTube, you're coming along later.
Yeah, there's a delay.
Recording in progress.
Oh, I did take charge of you.
Yes, there were some cases over the last two years in the, uh, uh, application process. Those are all the things that are called by talent, pretty minor things, but just having to do with, with timing and making sure that the additional 30 days, if it's a regional impact, so that gets called out. And then what happens if the, if the board and or the elected fail to act? So those changes that, the subdivision regulations needed to have incorporated site plans that are, that some of those changes because we worked on those more recently. So site plan regs, the only subdivision change is the failure of those four to act. And then there were a couple of little minor things, you know, the section that, that addresses the development of regional impact. And the subdivision reg that had been its own separate section. So I moved that into the application procedure section, I just thought it made more sense there. So very, uh, minor, just the, you know, word smoothing things and then, and then bringing both of them up to date with those two years of, of changes in the procedure.
And, are the procedures from an RSA Carol or?
Yes, yes.
Do you happen to know the RSA number?
Uh, that was, that was, they're mostly at the 676 colon 4, that's the board's procedure on the flat. And if you think it's helpful, I can add some references to both of the documents.
Uh, or I could put them in the minutes, um, whatever's easiest, I, you know, if you don't want to change the document, you happen to just put, put it in the minutes if you, if you let me know.
Yeah, I can, I can go through all those sections and confirm and I'll just shoot you an email.
Alright, thank you.
Carol, Zoom should be working now, if you want to try it.
I'm sorry, Carol?
Zoom should be working, if you want to try it, let me know if it works.
I'm sorry, you're, you're.
Yeah, it's frozen.
Yeah, Zoom, it should be up and running now, if you want to try it.
Oh, okay, so, hey, Carl?
He's sitting in front of the computer, we don't have Evy tonight.
Yeah, I saw her, I saw the email.
So, you're gonna have the RSA's in the minutes?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there any other discussion on the changes to regulations? I'd like to make a motion, we approve the changes to the regulations to bring us into state code, for state compliance.
We'll second that motion.
Any discussion on the motion?
Recording in progress.
Okay.
Oh, she's here.
So I'd like to get off the telephone now, because I can hear you. Okay, can you all hear me?
Yep.
Yeah.
Oh, great, excellent, so that's much better. Okay, so let's see, and, and I can see you as well, so, um, Carl, if you could repeat your question?
Um, I don't think, I, I just had, I just told you that Zoom was up and running.
Oh, okay, oh, thank you.
Um, and then I just made a motion to, uh, accept the regulations as amended to bring us into compliance with state law. And then I was seconded by, um, Jason.
Jacob.
Jacob, there we go, sorry. Um, any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
I like it.
Opposed, abstained, passes. Close public hearing.
You have to do each, each one of those.
I think we're doing as together, is my understanding. Carol, these are together, right, we don't have to do two separate?
There, well, they are two separate documents, but since the changes dealt with the same things, I thought we could just hear them both at the same time and get them both updated.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Alright, perfect, so that's all taken care of. Which brings us to subdivision questions, Paul Williams, you have the floor.
I'm looking at a piece of land on Bigelow Hill. It's a piece that Cal Patton has broken off his, he subdivided his into four pieces. And the one I have, it's right after 75 Bigelow Hill, I own 75. And it goes beside it and then it goes behind it. And I was thinking of purchasing that one piece and breaking mine in half and putting the piece out back with the new piece, if that was possible.
Do you have a map number of this?
I have no idea. This is the, this is the guy that owns it.
What map and lot number is it?
It looks like it's.
Down bottom on the left-hand side, I think.
It's underneath the power lines, kind of back there.
Or it's on top on the left-hand side?
Between 14 and 13B on the map. Map 11. There's no number inside of that, is the orange piece you're looking to buy?
Yes. And I own this green piece right here.
Which is, so you own number 14 on map 11. You want to buy the orange piece on this one, we'll pass that around. So 14 is eight acres, which you currently own, you want to buy a two acre parcel and bring that into yours and also split yours?
Yeah, I wanted to break maybe that eight into a two to go with the house, the mobile that's on it. And put the other six with that.
So Carol, two pieces of property. One is eight acres, uh, eight acres, he's looking to buy a two acre piece. And when he, once he buys it, he'd like to add it to the eight acre piece, but then split it. So he's kind of got two steps here, right? Or can he all do this in one?
Uh, yeah, well, actually, uh, if he owns both, he could do a, a, a lot, merger and a subdivision in the same application.
Yeah.
So that he wouldn't have to go through two processes.
Yeah, yeah, because once he owns it, he's just adjusting.
I don't, I don't own the orange one yet.
Well, yeah, if you did, that would be a process. So you're saying if you own both of them, you could do a lot line adjustment merger?
Yeah, and do merge and then subdivide in, in one application, but if he doesn't own both of them, then they, well, he can't, he can't merge property that he doesn't own, so before he could do the merger, he would have to, he would have to own that property unless they wanted to, that would just get complicated for two people, two different owners, to merge a lot and then share ownership and then, and then, you know, one gives up ownership and then they subdivide. It just, it's simpler to have one owner go through that process.
I just wanted to know before I bought it if I could do it.
Yeah. It looks and sounds like it, both have over 200 feet of frontage, so. And is this a rural district?
Yes.
So two acre minimum, so he's not gonna go into that, he's gonna increase the two acre one. How much are you gonna increase the two acre one by? Or I should say, how much are you gonna decrease?
If I could take the piece already owned, take two acres off of that and then put the other six with that new piece.
Okay, so you'd make the new piece eight acres and leave the current eight acres dropping down to two.
Right.
That'll still leave him in the two acre minimum for rural.
So the new lot would end up being six acres and your existing lot would be four then?
No, probably two with the one I already own and then make the new one, which is two now, into eight. I noticed the, the subdivision with the other lot, they all are like 2.03.
Yeah.
Is that, should I look into that when I?
It's probably just how it got divided, like they probably divided it and then came out to that number. The minimum is two acres, so you can't go under that without going to a whole different war crater and issue. So there's no, there's no reason to do 0.002 or 0.03, two acres is your minimum, you don't need that. So you could do two and a half, you could do three, whatever makes sense to when you're drawing your lines, that's the thing that you do. It makes more sense to draw a straight line back and you end up with 2.7, maybe that makes more sense.
I'll probably break it, whatever the survey says.
Yeah, and that would also determine too where that number falls. Because sometimes it's how those numbers come up, is like, well, it's easier to draw a line where the stone wall is, that's gonna give you point one more acres. Do you want a small look at this? Could you help?
No, I got, we have it over here and I got the map folder.
Obviously it's just a question at this point, but would the board have any questions on that? Stuff to think of now? To help them decide? I'd, seems like it'd be pretty straightforward when you get to it, if you allow it.
I just wanted to make sure before I bought.
Yeah.
It's all I need to know.
Yeah, yeah, I don't, I don't think there'll be any issues.
Yeah, other than there's, you know, there's multiple easements for the power companies, but. You live in every, where you can build and, uh.
That's why I wanted to put it with the large piece to go with, you know, 650 feet, whatever it is.
Yeah, get yourself past all those easements.
Right?
Yep.
Now, what was to buy, they'd have to build between the power lines in the road or between the two power lines, I guess disappears.
You're right.
But I wouldn't use that.
Just took some antennas out, I want to get free power. Yeah, I don't think we have any, it looks like it'd be straightforward if you decided to do it.
Okay, well, that's it.
Yep, and when you go, if you decide to do it, when you go to do it, go to selectmen's office first and they'll direct you what paper to fill out and go from there.
Okay, thank you. Thank you all.
That's something we should, we should do too, I just thought of, is when someone like this comes in, not just tell them what piece they're able to grab, but where to go.
Yep.
I get the selectmen's office, so I think that'll help with the flow chart too.
Yeah, so the flow chart, I think, was sent out to everybody, I'm not sure if everybody got a copy of it, no? Um, I thought it was sent to the planning board one.
She might not afford to get it if she's off.
You might have, it doesn't seem to work, there's a different one that seems to get to everybody that is, it comes up for me as Henry, under.
Yeah, yeah, it was coming up as Henry for some reason.
Usually that works. But I didn't get it.
I didn't say anything, but it'll be a buried fashion. We can work on that.
And then the other thing that was asked, um.
Excuse me, sorry.
The last meeting was asked Dick about the ADU pamphlets.
Yep.
Um, we're gonna wait on the house bill and they're waiting till their session meets and before getting that sent out, just for an update.
Yep, perfect. So I think next on our list is Jeff, meeting minutes of April 2nd. Over, over halfway to April.
So, that's the flow chart, I don't know if you've seen it.
Oh, this is nice to know, and.
So it is.
It'll be helpful regardless.
Is it on the type of page now?
Here, I can forward. Everybody wants to put in your email in the top there, you can send it to them, just pass it on around.
Anyways, your bank account's having to give them to that.
Just don't say your emails or your phone numbers on, because we're being recorded on YouTube and everything, so just, that's why you don't want that.
Mine came right up, I was just hoping, I do have my own sensor.
I'll make a motion to approve the town of Troy Planning Board meeting minute from Wednesday, April 1st, 2025.
I'll second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the minutes?
I, I.
Opposed, abstained?
Abstained.
Looks like Evy did us. For us.
You have to do it.
So it looks like Evy shared with us a e-learning, it's a monthly webinar series. Um, looks like it has dates for that one, it's noon to 1, it's an hour. Looks like it's.
Every Thursday, every month?
Yep. Looks like you can look at the previous ones too, so.
Yeah, I think once they've gone by, they post them now.
Like tomorrow, noon to 1 is, congratulations, you're a board member now, what's next? So that could be good for new members, that should be good for anyone probably, you always learn something. Which we'll go over, overview of the training resources of publications OPD offers. An overview of planning and zoning in general, purpose and role of planning and zoning boards. A list of often used planning and zoning acronyms, and tips on how to be a good board member. To register, click here. Register, click here, that doesn't work, piece of paper. Do we know, she emailed this to us?
I don't believe she did, but you can go right to the BEA website, that's pretty easily.
Is it BEA dot com?
I'll see that on there.
Clicking the link. OPD's has YouTube channel where you can find all the previous ones.
First you sign up the plan, the plan line, um, emails, they send them out.
Yeah, so once you sign up, they'll just give you notified, is that what you're saying?
Um, so I think that. Um.
I can send it like, it's actually NH Ecomy dot com.
It's open time again. So that's upcoming and I have more to go through here. Do you have anything else for old business, anything else other than the work program?
Um, I noticed in the meeting minutes that, um, Chris had talked to you guys about the water department having a solar project, um, in the work. I'm sure they're gonna submit something, I will talk to them about it, it's, it's revision energy, I'm sure.
Yeah.
They're gonna do a giant package and visit with all the boards ahead of time, I will accompany them, but it's, it's, they own it, so they will be the ones upon.
It's their game plan.
Yeah. We're gonna do a walkthrough tomorrow with the plan, the first step, and then I'm sure they'll hit the ground on it after that.
So that guy's planning to be a hundred percent self-sufficient based off of that?
Uh, we're hoping that way, but it's a PPA, so we'll be purchasing power from them at a discounted rate. Um, and then around year six or seven, we get the option to buy it up or not. Um, if we've been, came out with a great spreadsheet, um. I think we attached some meeting minutes on what it looks like if we did or didn't, you know, the savings is essentially the, the payment would be less than our electric bill, which is always what you shoot for in that circumstance and then and then the beauty of it would be to be able to budget, right, we'll know what that payment is as opposed to rates go up and down.
Up and down, usage change.
We can at least know our expense will be X every, but yeah. It should, yeah, it's one of the only things we can do to cap or cut costs over there, so it'd be good, it'd be a win, especially with no out pocket to build it.
Yeah. Yeah, that's always good. Yeah, yes, well.
Yeah.
See them, we see them. Uh, here's your bill tracking, I haven't heard anything else from that, that probably come from Selectman's office.
Oh, figure that, um, Mr. Buckley did respond back, does, uh, remember he called, or I said that you, I'm waiting for a answer to that. Having the solar panel down there and everything is fine, but the leasing issue? That the Selectmen can only lease town property.
Right.
Um, before up to a year, they have to go in front of town meeting.
Correct.
Or a special town meeting, so that's another thing.
I don't think, I don't think they're planning even beginning construction until, um, April of twenty six.
So you're gonna need a warrant article for that, just an FYI.
Yeah. I'm gonna talk at one point.
Yeah.
Thanks for your reminder.
I think that's all he said, he said, he said it to Selectmen, the, the Selectmen own, or the town owns the property, the Selectmen are in charge of doing all that. But he said the bigger issue is, well, one, it's not a bigger issue, the issue is the Selectmen can only rent for up to one year. So we have to go in front of town meeting to get any long-term leases, kind of like the, the pickup trucks, they think you're leasing your truck?
Yeah.
Yes, cause that was on the warrant article, same thing.
Correct.
Yeah.
Road safety we covered last time. Master plan survey and promotion. Um, conservation commission went over the chapter that kind of covered on that, um, we're waiting to verify with FEMA and NH. Here's Department of Animal Services, make sure another information that's in the old master plan is updated since then. Looks like the FEMA map in the master plan is still accurate, you don't think they've updated it since then, we're just gonna verify the other information. But that chapter may not need too much, other than maybe some verbiage update on the FEMA side and NH DES side. For that chapter at least, so, that one would be easier as far as master plan, there's minor changes. And then we're gonna go over, there's supposed to be a conservation. There's a committee go through properties that the master plan was put in the master plan to make sure it's one of the goals. And right now we're checking to see if that committee was ever formed and did anything, or if that, cause if they did, then we can remove that goal from the master plan. If they didn't, then maybe we can keep that or see if it's even still relevant or on taskable or what. So conservation commission is working on the chapter and we'll get back to us with anything else. Just so the board's aware. You know, work on it.
Oh, at this point in time, are we looking more at just doing minor changes and minor updates to our existing master plan rather than the complete rewrite, making it like a shorter, more modern one like we looked at, um. Got a couple of examples. Not last year, year before. Is that the direction that we want to be heading with this or not?
Not sure if we determined a full direction, I think that's what the surveys and what someone's looking to do.
I think that was really the, the hard part, right, or I think were the, well, I shouldn't say that, it's, it's daunting altogether, but, um. That was the really important part, I think, was to get the public input and all that, I think we seemed to have completed it out, I did. You know, in my personal thoughts, I've thought about, you know, we always have the option of someone doing it for us as well. That might be something we look into, and we've been trying to find the time to do it, but I would be in favor of something more modern and shorter, but, um. I have a copy of the old one, I've read through it a couple of times, it's certainly, it's great to have something that in depth, but I think if we, if we perused through it, we probably didn't complete a lot of what was on there.
Yeah.
And it's quite a little disappointing.
Yeah, this is a list of like six objectives in the front. One of them was something conservation oriented, I can't remember right now.
Yeah, which is okay, but.
Question was, did we ever do that, is it still right?
Right.
So I guess the answer to the question matters, we're not sure.
I, I was, I was weirdly worried, I just, um, I think this is kind of rare, we kind of fell apart, um, via the gowls. Next, that's why we went to forgetting public input or whatever, but as far as making a decision, what the general ways you want to go with this is, um, I mean I don't care one way or another, I'm just, we're gonna need to be able to answer that question before we can actually start to really make headway or talking about even hiring someone else to do it, to be able to say, this is the journey we're going down.
Yeah.
Um, and again, I think even with like the survey that we did that, that we do know some of the stuff that's important to people in town, but, um. Not exactly, um, like that much about how great a detail we want and how thorough planning.
What if, um, just a thought thrown out there, as I think about, what if we pick, like, let's say chapter one, we work on that next meeting and make a survey for chapter one, send out to public, what input did we get? Is that everyone on board? Okay, then we just revise it, it's, everyone's way over here, and we don't have to rewrite it totally. What if we did chapter by chapter, survey for each chapter? So you could break down each chapter, see which ones need to work, and which ones seem to be good and working? Rather than try to do this survey for everything, try to tackle all, I wonder if we just, hey, chapter one, let's work on this, let's build a survey based off chapter one. Get the public's input, the answers will tell us direction, we need to go for that chapter. We do each chapter at the end, look at it and go do we just need to rewrite a little bit, or do we need to fully overhaul? I think that'd be the best way to do it, cause trying to do a survey covers the whole thing. And it's either it'll be a hundred questions, no one's answering right, or we're gonna get lost ourselves. So what, what do you think of that idea, Carol, is that typically how some people do it?
I think, I, I think going chapter by chapter is, um, is kind of, that's, that's manageable. I'm not sure that you would need to do a survey for each one, I think the survey that you did is really comprehensive. And will probably end up really covering most of, of, of all the other, all of the other topics. I also think we have to worry about people just getting, you know, survey exhaustion and at some point, they'll just, you know, stop responding. I think you got pretty good response from the one that you did.
Yeah.
So I would say at least for the time being, just, you know, set aside, sort of table the idea of survey and see how it goes. And see if you decide at some point that there's more information that you need that you didn't get from the other one.
Yeah, maybe even before that, what comes first, do we decide what we want in it first and then? Cause I think we had a conversation at one point around what do we include and what don't we include, like, can we leave sections out? Um, and maybe maybe the first goal is to figure out which chapters we can just, um, bypass and then, if we want to, or maybe we don't, when we start looking at them.
Yeah, I, I think, I think it's a big job and then we're, you know, we're gonna get busy and it's gonna be hard to stay on track, so I, I would vote for trying to hire somebody to at least manage the effort and keep it, you know, keep it going and present options to the board. I don't know if we can afford that or whether we need to, we need to apply for a grant, but.
Well, I, I think that would fall back to Matt's question, cause you have to give that person or group a direction.
Well, I think, I think they can, I think, thinking back on what Jack said, I think you can be as involved or not involved as you wanna be, right? And, um, to that extent, you can be like, here's where we're at, I need you know, this would be a good time to think about or consult with residents about this and then, you know, pause and we can get, collect that information or share our opinion and then and then continue on.
Yeah, I mean, hopefully the person could take our report and give us some options of how to, how to approach it and, uh, and, and answering that person's questions, that person then could have the, kind of the guidance and we wouldn't have to do the legwork to, to figure out what the options are.
Does Southwest do that stuff and?
They do, so we could probably reach out to Southwest and ask them, you know, even who they recommend.
Henry.
He thought.
That'd be great for them, right, to be part of that conversation. Uh, I'm also wondering, I think at one point we kinda, I think we were all looking for ones that we liked, um, to kind of show as an example and not necessarily about what's in it, but like size and, and quality and and maybe how descriptive they were, how vague they were in some areas, but, um. That's on the homework side of it, we wanted to do something like that. And given Carol had given us some to look at previously, some modern updated ones that were just several pages and then and if anybody wants a copy of ours, I have a printed copy that I have staples printed out, it's quite, quite large.
Are we overthinking this? I mean.
Yeah.
No, I'm just thinking, there's chat GPT out there now, you can put in, say, hey, this is our current master plan, can we tell it to update it? And based off of the answers that we got off the survey, I mean, are we, is this, is it that possible? I'm not a tech guru, I'm not. I just found out about chat, chat GPT not too long ago, so I'm like very new with it, but.
I'm trying to take some classes with AI, but yeah.
Can you put it in there and boom, we have our, our master plan already updated, is that, is that possible?
You, you, you could, but you, you'd have to also proofread the heck out of it, cause it was gonna, it's gonna add some weird stuff in there maybe, right? Um, I don't, again, I don't know if we need a master plan that's, you know, thicker than that binder, but.
Two, twenty pages.
You might have to start with a whole new document and then, you know, do something like that, but.
From twenty to eighty-four pages to twenty.
I mean, some of the, I, I forget, some, I think, there was some out in the Lakes region that were pretty short and sweet, but also really kind of.
To the point.
Yeah.
Not sugarcoating it.
But I mean, then again, how much would, we might find that Southwest is very reasonable on that, right? And they've done it a million times, but, but yeah, but we've been over I think we don't wanna miss anything, but we've definitely been overthinking it.
Right, I'm just, I'm just trying to think of how can we streamline this a little quicker, you know, we can have to use a little AI. Okay, we'll proofread it and we can go to each chapter then and just see what we got and if it meets, if it hits all the points. We don't need to beat ourselves up over this, I'm just, I'm just trying, how can we streamline this so we can get it done this year instead of, I mean, last two years we've kind of been putting in.
Well, that's another thing, but it, where, though, I mean um, they did come in and talk to us about master plan and basically they they're pumping it takes time, probably better off not making any drastic changes.
Right.
And if, again, that's the way we want to go with it, and maybe we just want to do chapter by chapter review. Make minor updates, have necessary, say, okay, yeah, this was done. And maybe there's something I want to add, I didn't otherwise basically does minor updates. I think the viable way to, it's something that the decision between drastic changes or minor updates, I think is kind of where we sold out before and that to answer that question can then make it that we can say, okay, we can set a goal to say for our next meeting, we want to talk about this or that. Um, people say, you know want to have everyone take a look at chapter one for our next meeting or whatever, and then we can stop at then. Sort of a, um, approach that. Um, that's why, that I noticed happened last time and that again, overthinking, we're not, we haven't even gotten to any of the actual plan, we're just just making a plan on how to make plans better.
I like that idea of doing a chapter by chapter, I think that we still need somebody that kind of owns it, like with Carol, we'll talk about our ordinance changes, but then Carol's able to take the ordinance changes and make it happen and then bring it back to us, so as long as we had that one person who we could give, give the materials to, then they'd make the modifications and then go on to the next. Um, otherwise, one of us would have to be taking the ball up at every meeting and that may be hard to do.
So we should contact Southwest, start there.
Yes.
See what they offer for people or personnel or options.
Could we just put in, let's just say to test it out, put it in like the first chapter into like chat GPT? What questions would you come up with from this and then we go from there, to see if that's actually beneficial?
If we had, I, I'm sure this for someone who's used AI regularly, this might be a pretty, they could answer that for you pretty easily, but I don't know. Um, my little dealings with it would say that if you can ask the right questions, I'm sure it can do anything you want to, it's just making sure you ask the question properly.
Hey, if someone wants to do that, fine, but there'd be, you got a little concern that like they've been being increased in it in scientific journals and some interesting phrases which were never used before are suddenly popping up because AI scanned something and let it go to get a phrase, so if, if something, someone wants to do that, can, can give it something to work with? Fine, just, I think we need to be aware of its limitations and, yeah, if it, yeah.
When was the last census?
Twenty twenty, right?
Cause one of the first things you do, page B five, they have nineteen ninety and two thousand census graphs, we can update those to, from two thousand to twenty twenty.
Yeah.
And I think you want to update those. There's a household density map, we can update that, that's getting based off of two thousand census.
You're probably right, we could just, yeah, kind of go page by page and.
I mean, I think, cause that's what the conservation, we're gonna make sure the pictures in here are accurate, the maps, the graphs. Cause that could have an effect on the verbiage and what you're trying to do. This is the regional context, which is, it starts on page forty.
Yeah, I'm looking at. So West Regional Development Commission shows Chester Fields as an example of one that they've done. It's a hundred and twenty-six pages, but it was done in two thousand sixteen, so it's not. Still a lot more.
And I know Carol, Carol did a lot of work on the housing stuff, so that, that's probably applicable to the housing chapter. If we do hire someone, do we have to do it competitive or can we go single, single source?
I'm not sure.
Depends on how much money we got in our budget and.
How much it cost us?
Yeah, cause I don't think we put money in, to the side for the master plan, we just did it. So it's whatever we have in our current account and still manage to keep. The plan we're moving forward with sending out.
Yeah.
Information. But Southwest Community Services might do it. They're cheap because we're part of them and.
Yeah. Yeah, I think the first thing to do is contact them, see what the options are, that may also answer how we move forward.
Who's gonna contact?
Um, I can contact them.
You don't wanna know A I's answer to that question, how much they cost, but.
Forty-two million.
Anywhere from fifteen to seven, fifteen thousand to seven hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, I would think that even fifteen is probably more for cities than it is for towns.
Again, depends on how, how heavy we have to lean on them.
Yeah, how big, how detailed we want it to be, like how, how complex.
Cause if they're just doing a slight rewrite of chapters, then they might just breeze right through it. If we wanna tell them, hey, we want this whole thing completely rewritten and down to fifty pages, that's gonna involve a lot more work. So we see how much it's gonna cost us. And then that may determine what route we take.
And maybe they could just come to one of our meetings and, uh, talk about what they can do and what the options are.
Let's, let's cost and invite.
And I guess that one of their first questions is gonna be how, I don't think they actually want this to be.
We're verified, we don't know.
Just to the point. Just, we don't need so many.
Well, like I said, I think Carol had given us some that we can look at that are really, like, um, like Matt said, modern and short. We could take a minute and. Read one, I forget, they were out by the Lakes Region, is, is Carol still on?
Yeah, those were Tufton Borough and Middleton.
Tufton Borough and Milton. Those are the short and modern ones?
Yep, those are done in twenty, twenty-two and twenty-three, I think. And they're about, one is like fifty pages and one is a few pages less than that.
Yeah, Milton's really small.
Carol, do you happen to know who did those?
Yeah, I did.
Oh.
Oh, you did those plans?
And I'm working on one for Ossipe right now and I'm, I'm trying to follow this, the same approach, you know, keep it as simple as possible. Uh, so that, you know, because they also have an, an older one that's over a hundred pages and they feel the same way. They just, they don't want that anymore, people don't read them and they're just not helpful.
So Carol, are you an option for this work as well?
I'm sorry?
Are you an option for doing a plan for us as well?
Um, po- possibly, and, you know, I have been working with the Planning Commission because they've been down a planner for a while. But I, you know, I think that what I would like to do to start off with is I wanna just write up a little. Sort of overview for you of what, what the options are and, you know, sort of what approach you could take. And then I think Todd from the Planning Commission would be happy to come in and talk to you about what, what they would offer, the different approaches to master plan. We just did that with Nelson a, a couple of months ago to go through that discussion with them. So, you know, he's got some information ready that he could bring to you and I imagine he'd be happy to do that. So you can start to, you know, get a sense of what the possibilities are.
Yeah, if you, we could, uh, give it a comment, I don't know. I really need to hear from people that have done this more than us trying to figure out how to do it. So could you, are you, could, are you able to get a hold, hold of Tony for that?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, I'm, I'm in touch with him on a pretty regular basis anyway, so I can reach out to him and, uh. See if he can schedule himself to come to the next meeting and talk to you about, about this.
Yeah.
Happy to do that.
Please. Would it make sense for some of these, like page seventy-five, Fire Rescue Services, it gives a list of the equipment? What if we send those couple of pages to a fire department, say, hey, can you update this list for us?
For the ware planning board and the C I P committee to be. For, have we, the C I P committee is going through and looking at all the aspects. And coming up with a plan for what's, um, the. About lifespan of it is.
Yeah, this is just a list of what they currently, this isn't like goals, this is just a list of what they currently have.
Exactly, and so the C I P committee had all of that last year.
Should you say, contact the C I P instead of?
Well, they should have the list of everything, right?
E- exactly, and again, it doesn't hurt to contact, um.
Cause obviously ambulance list is gonna be different, cause we bought a new one. And then the highway department, all those vehicles have changed, so just look at that.
Yeah, I'm looking at Middle, Middleton's right now, like how they handle theirs, that, you know, they have an overview, the scope of the service of the department. Staffing, which isn't specific to who, but just how many. Um, for instance, for their equipment, it, department maintains a pumper, a tanker, a rescue four, street truck and any ambulance. It's not very specific about years, makes, remodels. And how each is paid for for maintenance and operation. And like a concern, uh, issue or concern for the future, which that would probably come directly from.
So you want us to contact the C I P for that list? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I'm pretty much saying that. You can either contact Mark, but yeah, either one can give you the same data, so.
I guess, I didn't know if you're saying like, what would be easier than, yeah, I just didn't know.
I'm saying that I probably have that list here that I can forward to everyone.
Well, I guess, I guess that if you have it, then.
And you'd have more than one department, right? It'd be a single source for multiple departments and then you could have the individual departments maybe update that at some extent.
So Carol, in doing the Middleton one, um, who, who was gathering the data? Like I, I see that you have information from the road agent and from the. From the police, et cetera, to see what their issues were and what the plans were. Was it?
Right, yeah. Community hostility section, right, I, I interviewed all of the department heads for, for both of those plans.
Yeah.
And, you know, got that information from them. Population and housing, it's just a lot of data crunching from the census information, it's, you know, it's tedious. But it's, you know, it's all available on, online. And, uh, Conservation Commission, we've got input from them for the natural resources section. And that was it, I'm doing surveys and, you know, quite a fair amount of public outreach to get people's opinions on those things. Because it's really, I see that master plan development is kind of a two-step process. You've got the, the data collection that tells you basically, like the snapshot of the town is like. What is there and, and how is it working? And then your future land use plan is what people want for, for the future. And you develop that from what you heard from everybody, you know, as well as some of the data that supports some things.
And was it, um, were there open meetings that you did that with? Or you did personal interviews or planning board members did the interviews or how did?
No, I did, I did the, I did the interviews, I would, you know, drive, drive up there and spend the day talking to people. Or, or by telephone if I, if I couldn't, couldn't get there. Um, we did have, in Middleton, I have to say, the planning board was not terribly engaged. And they were under a time crunch, they wanted it done in a really quick turnaround. So, you know, we did that, but there was much more engagement with, with Tufton Borough. We, we had a, a big survey, we had, uh, postcards. We, we had a colleague and I, we set up a table at the transfer station on a Saturday morning and asked people questions. Uh, so we did, we got good feedback in Tufton Borough, so we felt pretty good about, about that plan. That it was reflective of what people really wanted for their town. So it's, you know, some of it is, it is time consuming and, you know, in that time you had to spend. Even to make a smaller document, you still have to have, you know, some data, which we ended up putting most of it in an appendix. So that the one, the thing that you read is actually pretty short, but there are links that would, if you're reading it online, which is why we did the. You know, the landscape, uh, format, then you can, you know, just click the link. If you, anyone who's a, you know, a number nerd wants to go and read all of that census data, you just click the link and you can go there.
And you said it pretty short order, how, was it a year process or six months?
Tufton Borough was exactly one year, from the day we started to the day the planning board wanted to adopt it, it was one year. Milton was a little bit less than, than that because, like I said, they were in a real hurry. And they just didn't want as much from their plan, so we kind of blasted through that one pretty fast.
So I guess if we have Tony coming in next meeting, if we can, they're gonna, do you wanna forward what you have for C I P stuff, Matt? For next time?
I'm going to try to get that, forward it to you guys.
And then like.
Contact Southwest too, maybe they can come in too and get a price from them. You know, we have a couple of things on the table for next meeting. There'd be, uh, options or pricing or just information to start rolling.
Yeah, well, I just closed them up, but yeah. Yeah, I think these are for being, you know, again, they're short and to the point, I think they actually encompass most of what's in ours. It's just ours is extremely detailed.
The other discussion we could have too is, you know, do we need the information that they put in for like all the town departments? We gave, ours gives like equipment and all that stuff, do we need that or just need to say, hey, this is what they do?
I think you should look at some of these, it's literally a, 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 a couple sentences, right? Like it, it's fine, um, but I think what you're gonna find is that there's chapters in ours that are not in others.
Yeah.
We, it was very, we don't think had detail, I think we'll find that there's chapters we just, we. We either don't need in there or don't need.
Obviously it's hard to navigate too, like I find it hard to navigate and you're looking for something, you're just scrolling.
It's just a ton of information.
Yeah.
I think if you can look at one of these, you'll, you know, just my opinion, uh, these are easily digestible, they show photos of things. Um, you know, you could. I think my brother-in-law actually lives in Mil- Middleton and I got a pretty good overlay of their town just by reading through this. It's pretty nice. I've only been there once. It was a, couldn't get there from here kind of place.
The middle part of the town, right?
It's like out between like Rochester and I don't even know, One of Psaki, Bullspurrow, like that.
Yeah.
Yeah, Milton.
Alright, so what do we, uh, Carol, you gonna try to see if you get Tony for the next meeting? Or.
Yes, yeah, I will, I'll reach out to him tomorrow.
Alright, and then, uh, if Matt is able to forward the stuff for the C I P information.
Think I saw it.
You sent it?
Oh, you did?
Yeah, I was gonna.
Might probably not, no, five minutes. Or it's under working, I don't know. And then, um, obviously somebody by our side reviewing the Tufton Borough and Milton, rest of us review those and. We'll talk about it next meeting. Which, might just throw a date out there, what is that?
May seventh.
May seventh. Is that three weeks from now? One, two, yes, three weeks. May seventh. And I will not make the May twenty-first one, I will not be in the state. Just in case I forget the time, it's the seventh. Anything else on the agenda? Uh, Suckman's update?
Uh, tomorrow, the T R G is gonna meet at, uh, six o'clock P M here, uh, Suckman is gonna meet right after at six fifteen. Uh, we just need to have a meeting with the T R G, just cause we haven't had one in a while. Um, I think there was a couple of, uh. I think it was an attempt to cut, our budgets are in there, hopefully everyone's been used so far. Uh, the planning board, we're, I think we're at seventy-three percent left.
Wow, we brushed that.
Um, yeah, zoning is at ninety-six percent, we need to be around seventy-five percent right now. Planning board's at. Planning board clerk, oh, seventy-five point two nine, so we're right.
She asked you to eat it.
Uh. What else? Uh, so Detroit Senior Housing Property, uh, apparently they're trying to sell it, Southwest is trying to sell, sell it. And I know the town has first right of refusal or something along those lines.
I believe it's already uh under agreement.
Pardon me?
I believe it's already under agreement.
Oh, yeah, it might be. Uh, intent to cut building permit or extension, uh sale of town-owned property, tax-dated properties. We've been, we talked about that last time about Forest Road properties and other town-owned properties. We don't know what we're gonna do right now, if we're gonna get the auctioneer, we're just trying to see what their proposals are, um, I know. There's a lot of people interested in Forest Road, the five lots up there. Uh, some people are upset because at first we were gonna sell them all as a package deal and now we're looking at them to sell individually. We don't know which way we're gonna go with that yet, so we're still discussing it. Uh, we're gonna update the town's security camera policy, the credit card and debit card policy. Uh, there's gonna be the debit cards that's being able to be taken to pay your water bill.
Uh, no, well, online only.
Online only?
Right, yeah, not not swipe, you'll be able to pay online, we're just waiting for one test, um TJ had offered to test it with his next bill, it's just went out. I believe yesterday or the day before, um, once he does that, they'll turn it on, so.
Okay.
We just gotta make sure it goes to the right spot, that's it.
Okay, um, and then the transfer station, we're looking into possibly taking debit cards or credit cards. When you go down to the transfer station, there's gonna be a point-of-sale um machine there and at the rec. Uh, for all the functions that we do at the rec, uh. Also, the town clerk, it's gonna be in the next Troy communicator. Uh, they can do registrations for boats now, they went through the training, we got the stickers.
Oh, cool.
So we can register boats here in town, so it's another source of revenue coming in. Um, for the last few years, well, since I've been on as a selectman since twenty seventeen, we've been looking for every. Any way we can make more revenue to offset the taxes in this town. Uh, for some reason, we haven't been registering boats and we've been losing that revenue, that source of revenue for years. Uh, reminders for dog licenses, if you haven't got your dog license, you haven't told it in the April. Uh, make sure you get in here and register your dogs, cause that's another source of revenue coming in for the town, um. We've got some correspondence about DOT driveway permit letter, uh DES town dam letter. And New England Power Transmission Report Letter.
The DES letter for the dams, can you have that forwarded to Conservation Commission?
Uh, yeah, I'll have Jeremy do that tomorrow.
Thank you.
Uh, other than that, it's, our our meeting shouldn't be very long tomorrow, it should be under the two-hour mark, I'm hoping, so. Uh. I'm gonna try and keep everything moving forward and progressing here in town, I asked them rec. Uh, they just did the last, the community dinner last week, right?
Yes.
Well, uh, I don't know what the turnout was on that, I didn't get any update, I was out of town for that. Um, the community breakfast that we, that they did for with the Easter bunny, they had a good turnout, it was just pancakes and sausage and bacon.
Yep.
Well, um, so I, right now, I think they might be doing another breakfast for next month, I'm not a hundred percent sure on that. But also, sign-ups for the summer camp is now going on. Uh, Beyond the Bell is not doing it here in Troy anymore, it's only gonna be in Manhattan, so, and they're only accepting a hundred and twenty-five students. Just so everyone's aware, so. I'm not sure if they have a list already picked out for their hundred and twenty-five or whatnot, but it's, I'm assuming it's a first come, first served. Uh, but Bob is taking applications right now for the Troy rec summer camp, the ones that we do. Uh, the sooner we get the numbers and how many kids and students we're gonna have, uh, we'd be able to determine on how many counselors we're gonna need. So if you want a job being a counselor, you can contact Bob Norton as well. I think that's all I have, there's somebody has a question for me.
Um, they got some email, there's only two bedrooms available for water sewer?
Oh, three, yeah, three, yeah, we did an audit at the last uh meeting between the. There's a home going in on Prospect Street and um the development on um between South and South Main. That took up twenty-nine between the two.
Don't think everything helps?
ZVA update.
ZVA, yeah.
We had a meeting last Tuesday. And, um, down the butter for the. South Street subdivision that we just approved, um, is. Looking to have that, have a turn in, during a PL administrative decision.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the one that was concerned about the water, um, flowing onto its property, um.
Did he file it or is he looking to?
He had filed or he hadn't paid yet, so it wasn't, out of that night, it wasn't all filed, but he hadn't done the paperwork. And everything and we went over the butter's list with him and he actually showed up for the meeting, so.
You say if he hadn't done, he's getting pretty close to his thirty days.
Right, that's what I was gonna say, there's a timeframe of thirty days.
Exactly, but basically, he had everything there and I believe was planning on filing the next day, they just had to. Just have to pay the fee. And what the situation was then, I haven't heard any updates.
Alright, I haven't heard any either, this from the selectman's point of view.
So.
So we have possibly, you know, a return for our, the planning board's decision on that.
Correct.
So, well, so at that point, one of the select, or no, one of the planning board members or all of us might need to go to the ZVA. And.
Yes.
Say our two cents on why, who, when, where, how.
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
Yes. By number one, I hope, I mean.
Yeah.
I, I don't have any more information.
So legal right, do what they need?
Yeah.
Well, that's a desirable process.
Yeah.
You just gotta follow the process, you don't follow the process, it. It'll not hold.
I guess, uh, well, I guess they'll they'll update us if they need to, it's been filed, they probably notify us of the meeting schedule.
I believe that, what they're gonna do is.
Alright, nothing else from dates? Think we're gonna adjourn the meeting at eight seventeen.